Good morning, good evening everyone. This is the September meeting of the Dobbs Ferry zoning board of appeals. And I want to introduce, we have a newly appointed alternate member of the board, Stuart Sax, who's sitting two seats over from me. And his name tag is not there yet, but so I thought I should let you know who he is. And in the event that, we need three people for a quorum, so there may be a matter where someone has to refuse himself, and in which case Stuart will be voting, otherwise he won't be. So we have four applications tonight. The first one is 25 Sand Rock. Is anyone here on that application?
Yes.
Okay, please step up to the mic. And while you're doing that, I will just summarize the application we have, which is it's a plan to extend an existing deck. And the applicant is seeking two variances, because the required minimum rear yard setback is 25 feet, and the proposed setback is 15.27 feet. So it would require a variance of 9.73 feet. The second is also is for the side yard setback, which is a required minimum of 10 feet. The proposal is a setback of 9.8 feet, so that variance is .2 feet. So please tell us who you are and what you'd like to say about the application.
My name is David Shack. I'm the property owner with my wife. We're interested in building a new deck in the back. It's a 12-foot by 15-foot is our design deck. And as stated, we have those two setbacks that we were trying to request a variance for.
So you want to tell us a little about, you know, what you're trying to accomplish with the project?
Okay, so it's trying to build the deck out from the first floor. Currently don't have any area in the back to be able to have our kids outside in a fenced in area essentially, so we're trying to have an area for my young children to be able to play outside and have some more space in the back. Trying to improve our home and have a better area in the back for us to be able to spend time.
Anybody have any questions? Or, oh, is there someone else who'd like to be heard on this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before we do that, no other questions from, okay, please step up to the microphone and tell us who you are.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jerry Galderesi. I live at 26 Gould Avenue, which is directly behind 25 Sand Rock. My concern is from my backyard and my house, which is setback about 40 feet. It would be kind of encroaching on my yard, because the 25 Sand Rock is equal with Sand Rock. It's a walk-in, but there is a slope that the house is built on, so that the basement is a walkout in the back, because it must be about a 15-foot drop from the front sidewalk, the front, to the backyard. The backyard is about 25 by 50, which is an area for children to play. The 15-foot, I thought that said 25 by 15, and the gentleman just said 12 by 15. So the house, I think, itself is on the 25, is 25 feet from the property line, which means that any extension is in violation of the zoning laws. I just feel that the deck, since the basement is a walkout, I think it's 10-foot ceilings. It's been a while since I've been in the house, a previous owner. Two-by-tens in between the floors, we're talking that the first floor would be about 12 to, about 12 feet above the backyard. You put a deck on there, six-foot person, we're talking 21 feet, looking right down into a private backyard. There are arborvitae there, which I was influential in getting the builder to plant. I did him some favors, and I asked him if he would do that. The whole backyard of mine has arborvitae straight across the back, with 25 and I have 27 or 29. I'm not sure what the next house is. I understand why they would like to have a deck. I have a deck, two decks behind my house, but they didn't violate the zoning laws. Like I said, they're about 40 feet from the property line. I don't, I don't see an extent coming out from the house. What's the depth? Is the depth 12 or 15?
Twelve.
Yeah, 12 by 15, 12 depth, 15 wide. Okay. In the letter, I think it basically says 15 by 25, I'm not sure, that came to the I could see a six or eight foot depth. I mean, my wife and I are really trying to be good neighbors, and we understand people. I mean, I know I love my deck, so rot it all the time. But it's really difficult to have somebody looking down on you. So that's, so you know, I'm against the thing, basically, I'm against the zoning waiver. I might be willing to hear something different.
Okay. And thank you. I think we'd like to hear from the applicant again, because could you just clarify, what's the size of the, there is an existing deck, right?
There is a patio.
Oh, it's a.
Yeah, there's not an existing wooden deck.
So this is going to be on a different level?
Correct, yeah, it's installing a new deck.
I see, so it's, okay, yeah, I think actually our notice or the denial letter got that wrong, I guess.
Okay.
The plans show it at 10 feet, the deck, not 12 feet. It's nine feet.
Yeah, nine, nine, nine.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's what it shows on the plan, not, not 12 feet.
Right, thank you. So yeah, in response, yes, as mentioned, those large trees are there that are extended far beyond the area of where we can see out onto their property right now. When we look outside our windows right now, I mean, we have these large trees that are there, and they're continuing to grow. I've looked at pictures that were from the house from several years ago, and from my understanding, these trees are going to continue to grow taller, and they're very strong. So I would imagine that with those trees being a visible barrier there, and for the deck not extending, you know, up to the, to the property line or within the trees, but still an area, that there would be a barrier between the deck and where those trees are. In addition, I mean, our, our home is on an elevated area, and one could say that you could see from windows, but from a lower down, we're not looking to put a deck onto the second floor, or there's no, there's no stairs up from the deck. I mean, it's just that one level that would not extend beyond that. So, you know, we're respectfully requesting the permission to be able to, you know, add this on to our house and be able to have that for our house. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, one thing we have to look at is to balance, you know, what needs to be done to provide a benefit to you as the homeowner, but it is true that this is a, you know, the rear yard setback variance you're asking for is fairly substantial. Have you considered a lesser size, or have you discussed that with the architect, and if it would be feasible to make this a little smaller?
Yeah, so we had discussions regarding the size, making it smaller on both directions. And given the patio that's currently there, and the size that would be required to put, let's say, like a table and chairs out there, so we're looking, we're looking to put a table and chairs out there to be able to eat. So with that size, the architect said this would pretty much be the smallest that we could do, especially regarding the patio and the footings that would be required for it.
So just for clarity, the proposed size of your deck is exactly what by what?
I apologize, I went off of the denial.
The denial doesn't have the size of the deck.
Yeah, I can pull that up, I apologize for that.
And I could assume it by doing the property line and the variance, I want to just hear it from you.
Yes. Yeah, so the size of the, yeah, 9.79 feet extending out.
Right, that's how you get the 15 from the 27.
Yeah, so yes, I apologize about my incorrect numbers before you. 9.79 feet, we're looking to extend beyond.
And your size basically just continues, it follows the width of the house. You're not going really, on your side, you're much beyond the width of your house.
Correct, yeah, we're looking to have.
Especially you're going straight back 10 feet.
Yeah, correct.
Which is probably as small as you could make a deck, if you think about the size of.
That's what the architect.
Yeah.
You can't really go much beyond less than 10 feet.
I'm Kathy Galderesi, I'm Jerry's wife. My concern is that they do have a very lovely backyard already. It's grass, the children play there. I've had another family that lived there, and the children would kick the balls over the fence, et cetera, et cetera. I pick the balls up, I return them to the children. I have no problem with that. But we like to eat out on our deck, which is very low. It's not even very low. And by putting the deck in that they're talking about, they're going to be almost in my lap as we're eating. And there's a privacy issue for me.
Sure.
Because, you know, I'm from the Bronx, long ago, far away. And I came up to Dobbs Ferry because I graduated from Mercy, and I love the town, and I like to feel that I have a little bit of not-so-much-of-the-city feeling in my house now. That's what will happen if this goes through. I don't want to appear that I'm unfriendly. The children have, you know, they're very lovely children, have no problem with being children, they're great. But having them run around right in the first floor, they can look into my rooms as well. So that's my concern, is a privacy issue. I know you're discussing the legalities of it, but remember, it is already on the 25th foot, where they're supposed to be from our fence, from our property line. The house is already there. So they knew that when it was bought, and whoever did their title search should have let them know that as well. So by saying, oh, they need, they need a deck, perhaps they should rethink how they should let, set up their backyard, and not have to add another structure to our neighborhood and make it more crowded. That's my concern.
Generally, when we've had these issues in the past, it's very much similar to what you just described. The usual solution has been to add plantings, but I gather there are plantings that would block the.
You put them on at our expense. It isn't there since that house, that house used to be a pool there.
Right, but there are plantings, we can't ask them to add plantings, because you've already have plantings that block the sightline. So, so if.
They're tall, but they may be 15 feet.
That's it.
You know, but that's, the deck itself will be tall to 15 feet off the property, off, off the ground. And then you put a six-foot person there, five or 10, now you're talking 21 feet, you know, visual coming down. So, you know, you have to take it and occupy. Or just.
And actually, let me just ask you to stay, stay at the microphone when you're speaking, only, only because we're recording the meeting, so I should have told you that sooner.
Yes, yeah. It's just that, you know, the, the deck will be about 12 to 15 feet up from the, the property, from the ground. Then you put a six-foot person on there, now you got 21 feet where the person has, you know, sight of the other yard, and we have sight of them. I mean, our deck is about three feet above the, the ground.
But what will be the effect, you said it's arborvitae that you.
Arborvitae, yeah.
Arborvitae.
Yeah.
I mean, how big are they expected to get? Because I think, I think those.
Well, I think they're about probably at, at maximum height. I mean, they've been there since the house was built. I know he put in seven, eight footers. And it has to be there 10, 12 years, I think, you know. I have no, no temporal mode, so I, time to me is just one big. But I think it's about 10 to 12 years, if not more. So they're just about at full height.
Yeah, thank you. I have another question for the applicant.
But just to reinforce one thing my wife said, builders love to fill the space, you know, and, and that house filled the space of the property. He should have realized, he's a nice guy, by the way, I mean, I like him as a builder, as a person. But should have realized that by going to 25 feet in the back, he stopped them from having any, you know, any, anything like a deck, or any, any structure. And then you ask for a zoning waiver, and now you're filling up the whole piece of property, you know, with a structure. And, you know, that's, that's not what suburban living's supposed to be about, you know. Huge houses on.
So Mr. Shack, I guess, I have a question. So you currently have a patio on the bottom level.
There are pavers, yes.
I'm sorry?
Pavers, yes, a patio.
Okay. You know, so what, you know, what exactly is the need for an additional place to sit outdoors that that, that you don't get from the patio?
So it's actually twofold. So we're actually looking for shade for the underneath area of the patio. So right now, when we're out there, the sun is coming down, and even we have an umbrella that we got, and the sun is coming down at such an angle where it's very difficult to get any shade while we're out there, especially at the hours that we'd be out there. And then secondarily, to be able to have access to going, being outside from our first floor, as compared to go, compared to going down through the basement and outside, and then out to the back. Just to bring out, to respond to a few things that were mentioned, we're first-time home buyers, and, you know, we're navigating the situation the best that we could, and it's no excuse that we did not know that we would not be able to build a deck, and that we did not know the 25-foot setback. That was not something that we were informed about, and it's, you know, our fault for that, I definitely take the responsibility for that. But we anticipated that we'd be able to do that, and when we found out that we couldn't, you know, we tried to go through, making the deck as small as possible, and then also trying to go through the appropriate means to be able to obtain this permission. In reference to other things that they were mentioning, I totally respect your, the privacy that you're looking for, and I definitely understand that, I would want the same thing. And so you're mentioning the deck that you have out right there, and eating out there, and you don't want to have people looking down on you, and I totally understand that. They have a pool that pretty much butts up against the back of their property, and I could definitely understand if, and we can't see the pool at all, and you can't see us from the pool, so the, the level of the, the trees and with the position of the pool is such that even with, even from our second floor, we can't see their pool whatsoever. And I could understand, being at a pool, you'd want, you know, more privacy than when eating or when doing, you know, regular things outside in your backyard. So I just wanted to be clear that we don't have any view of your pool and anything about that.
Yeah, the pool met the zoning, the zoning requirements, five feet.
Five foot. And so let me just, you know, this doesn't necessarily reflect how we're going to vote, but, and I'm speaking to the neighbors, I believe you indicated that, that you wouldn't be so dis, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Is that better? You'd indicated that you might not find it as troubling if it were somewhat, if it weren't as big a deck. Is it the height or, or the size?
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing you can do about the height. I mean, if you want to walk out from the first floor, it has to be at that height. But I would say the depth, how far it comes towards our property, I mean, ideally, no, but I understand why someone would want a deck. It's advantageous to be able to walk out of the dining room or the kitchen where the sliding door is. We, we didn't have a sliding door on our house. We had a double window in the dining room. We made that a sliding glass door. And it's just one of the most enjoyable parts of the house. And I could see why someone would want it to enjoy, you know, three seasons, and really sometimes four. But if it, if it didn't come out as far, six, eight feet, I think would be fine, you know. If it's 9.78, you know, just bring it back a little bit.
If you'd like to step up to the microphone and say something else.
All right, that's all.
Anyone else here to be heard? Is anyone else want to be heard on this application? Anyone online?
Before you close, Mr. Shack, do you want to consider what they're saying as a means of working through a compromise? Or do you want to talk to your architect about it? Or do you want to explore what the effect is of the patio, if you've got a deck above it that may or may not be waterproof, and the water may come down onto it? Do you want to have a, for the opportunity to consider the options you've heard tonight, and the options you could discuss with your architect?
Yeah, I mean, I'll definitely, you know, consider other options if this is denied. In regards to the being waterproof, we're actually hoping to have a situation where the, the water will get caught from underneath, and to be able to have a dry and both a shaded area underneath. And so we actually, we were looking to have it just an extra foot beyond what it was, just to give more space to where the patio underneath. And then when we found out that it was not allowed with the setback, then with, or discussions with my architect, he recommended that we do it as, as small as possible going out. And so per, I mean, I second talked to another architect, but I mean, per his recommendation, this is pretty much the smallest you can have going out to be able to have a table and chairs and not be, you know, bumping up against it. So, you know, we just respectfully request the permission to be able to do this.
Can I suggest you come out at the patio level, just extend the patio? You'd have more concrete, one more space for an umbrella and chairs, et cetera. So if you just come out from the basement, make the patio follow the line of the house, because you'll have grass there.
Right, so first of all, that takes away from the grass space for the kids to be able to play, and secondarily, we're looking for shade for the underneath of the patio, and then.
But the place for the children to play, now the walls are definitely going to cover the property, and I'm going to be doing, picking that up a lot, nothing personal, but I'm not a young kid anymore.
I understand.
So let me, let me, let me suggest this. I mean, if, if you were to withdraw the application, it does seem that you're all reasonable people, and that there, you know, is a very good possibility that you could work out something that will not make any of you totally happy, but that you can all live with. So if you want a ruling from the board tonight, we can close the hearing and we can take a vote, or you could ask, you could either withdraw the application or ask to put it over for another meeting. So you'll have some time to meet with the neighbors and with your architect, and see if there's a, a plan you can come up with.
What are the logistics of those two options? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we can, we can put this matter over to the next, to the next meeting, and if in the meantime, you, you want to make a different application, that addresses, that addresses the concerns that you've heard tonight, right? I mean, the board is in a difficult position, there are concerns, you have an opportunity, hold this over, you've heard the concerns, work with the neighbors, come back with some sort of a compromise, or alternatively, come back with other arguments as to why, you know, we shouldn't hear the neighbors and their concerns related to privacy. But typically, in these situations, it's to your advantage to just pause this here and, and go and address the concerns that you've heard and then come back.
Sounds like if that's the recommendation of the board, then I'll take that recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing is, if you do go that way, you'll have to submit a set of plans to the building department, so I could write the denial on that for the, for the variance now, if it changes.
The, the ask, you mean, in terms of what he's asking for?
Well, yeah, if he changes the size of the deck, because then at the next meeting, they won't have a denial or a notice on the application to issue the variance.
Well, but I, I mean, wouldn't, he would then be submitting a new, you know, requesting a new building permit?
We could continue, yeah, or we could continue, and I could write the denial as per the, the new plans or the new agreement.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you do reach an agreement about a, a different plan, then you need to submit it to the building department, and it may still require a variance, so it might be a smaller variance, but assuming it'll, it'll require some amount of variance, you know, building department will rule on that, and if, if it's denied, you can come back here. Okay. Okay, so we will table this until we hear from you next month.
Great, thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Okay, thank you all. Good luck. The next application is for 210 Clinton Avenue. And this is a application concerning plans to construct an addition, and it requires a, the required minimum front yard setback is 30 feet, but the, and the existing setback is 25 feet. And the proposed front yard setback is 23 feet, thus, actually, I have a question for Mr. Ror. So are we, isn't it still a variance of, of eight feet, or, or seven feet, if it's, if, you know, I mean, the, the pre-existing doesn't change the, the numbers for the variance?
This is a. Right. This is, right, because it's, it's, the existing building I wrote it on is 25 feet, and they're extending the non-conforming by the two feet. Well, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it's relevant to us that there's an existing thing, but it's just-
Yes, sure.
Technically, it's, you know, the variance is from the minimum setback. So-
Correct.
Okay. And who's going to be heard on this?
My name is Peter Altamare. I'm with Michael Lewis Architects, here representing our clients Jonathan and Bonnie. They just recently bought this home and hired us to help renovate it and make it their forever home. The property is located at 210 Clinton. It's a flag lot, so actually, if you could, on this drawing, you can see a picture. They have a long driveway that goes down to their, to their driveway parking area for the garage, and then this is the home. The property opens up quite a bit in this section here, and it's quite open. And we're doing some minor work in the back as well. We're putting a new deck on and stuff like that, all within the zoning. What's, what we're here for today is the front setback, which is right here, which is butts backyards of these two properties here. Here's the existing site plan. We're also doing some minor removal of coverage, which again, isn't requiring a zoning variance at this time. Here's the proposed. What we're asking to do is, yes, currently, the front setback is 30 feet here, this blue line here. It's setback 30 feet. The house is five feet within the existing setback currently. It's an existing non-conforming. There's a large overhang on the, on the house in this area. It's about three feet out. And in this location right here, there's a kitchen, and we're proposing bumping out the kitchen by two feet to add a little additional cabinetry for depth of appliances and so on, which would be completely 100% underneath the existing overhang. Obviously, it's all for a zoning variance, in all fairness, but it gives a lot more flexibility to the kitchen currently. It's a little tight. The other part of this variance is that we're proposing a pergola in this location here. It's an open structure. We're gonna, the plan is to plant it with vines and other plantings on it. The pergola is, it's tough to see on this in the scale, but it's eight feet off the setback. And then the pergola itself is 12 feet by 16 feet in this direction. So it's 12 feet back and then 16 feet wide. We're planning on putting some pavers and, yeah, pavers or concrete pad underneath it for table and chairs, like a small table and chairs. This is located right off the dining room in the kitchen, and it's a, quite an intimate space over here. When you go to this, this property, it's actually, it's a yin and a yang. It's quite, it's quite an impressive site, actually. When you come down the driveway, it opens up and you'll, it goes, the slopes down, has a view, amazing view up, with some old large trees. This side of the house is much more intimate. It's a, there's a gravel space over there. There's a little minor retaining wall, and then it slopes up, actually, I'm sorry, I should do it here. It slopes up this way towards the properties, the backyard properties. There's some also larger trees over here that also hang over this gravel area. And we, the clients have hired a landscape architect as well, and we're going to do some additional planting in this area as well. So what we're asking for is this bump out for the kitchen as well as a pergola. Just to give you some-
And where exactly is the pergola?
Um, let's see.
I couldn't quite see it on the drawing.
Yep, sure. Yep. It's right here. Here, let's see. I'll talk loud. The pergola's right here.
Oh.
12 feet by 16 feet.
Hmm.
It's eight feet off the property line.
Oh, I see.
Another 12 feet, and then five feet off the house.
Okay.
These are some of the pictures of this space in the, on the, that's the front yard of the property here, between the neighbors. Am I breaking rules, right?
No, that's not.
Okay, sorry. So this is the area that we're talking about right here, with the gravel space. Right here is a large overhang. You can see it in a couple of the pictures here. So that's the little bump out that we were discussing. The pergola would be right here in this space here. It would be, the bench right here that's in this picture is basically where the edge of that pergola would be. Again, this, you could see how it starts to slope up, and you could see even by the size of these trees, they're absolutely among us. In this area, there is no views of the other neighbors. These are evergreen trees. There's lots of planting. We're going to do additional planting with, with working with the landscape architect. It will be a, the goal is to keep this as an intimate space. And it's not a large, not a large space. It's a space to have a small dining table with like four chairs. They're an older couple. It's not like, they're not having raging parties. But the goal is for the intimate space. The other side of the property does have a much larger deck that we're proposing to build, and will be more for larger gatherings. Let's put it that way. There is a fence here. Again, it is an intimate space. I can show, I did, done the drawings. I might as well. I'm going to skip through the- And here's the little bump out for the kitchen here, that's underneath the underhang, overhang right here. And then the pergola comes out. We have these dining room here with the door that would go out to here, to where the pergola would sit.
The variance is further, it's the kitchen bump out, though.
Right.
Really, the only issue for us, as our jurisdiction, is a two-foot variance that extends your existing nonconfor, an additional two-foot extending your nonconforming.
Okay.
What you're doing with the kitchen, lovely, but not our jurisdiction.
No, 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 I got it. Okay. And the elevation of what we're doing here.
Yeah. And, I mean, it seems to me it's, it's actually a little bit of an anomaly to talk about a front yard, because none of this actually faces a street.
Ah.
So, yeah, I think that kind of takes this out of the normal concerns we have for a variance that involves a front yard. Is there anyone else here who'd like to be heard?
Motion to close the hearing?
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve the request to extend the existing non-conforming variance of the front yard by an additional two feet?
All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It's funny.
I've walked around the street hundreds of times, and I've, and I never noticed this house. It's a beautiful property.
If you sneak down the driveway, the view is, you get down to the bottom. I don't know, maybe you're a mess.
I, today, with the excuse that, you know, you had the application, I did that for the first time.
I was thinking, once upon a time, it was safe to sneak down a driveway. Nowadays, I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
Interesting, because first of all, mine, property owners, such a vast experience and view, and it's sort of a big celebration, right? If you just want to have a quiet cup of tea, it's like, ready you got, with this whole surprise of this guy in the front area.
Sounds good.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, our next application is 82 Virginia Avenue. And is someone here on that application?
Who's going to come in?
Oh, they're going to join online. Okay. So this is in the MDR 1 zone, and the applicant is seeking to construct a new side entry, which will require two variances. For the side yard, the minimum setback is 10 feet, and the proposed setback is six and a half feet, requiring a side yard setback of three feet, seven inches. And the minimum side yard setback for both sides is 20 feet, and the proposed side yard setback for both would be 16 feet, five inches. So that would require another variance of three, three feet, seven inches. And who is here on this application?
David from Stephen Seakin's office.
I'm not sure, can everyone here, maybe speak up a little louder, please?
David from Stephen Seakin Architects.
Thank you. So please tell us about your project.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Here, I work with Stephen Seakin Architects, and I'm representing the client in regards to this application. Can I share the screen? Am I able to do that?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I'm back.
We're not seeing your screen as of now.
All right. You should be seeing it now.
Okay.
Are we able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Great. Well, in front of us is the site plan, which is part of our submission in the upper right of the cover sheet that we submitted, along with the zoning information. And we are looking to apply for that variance for the side stair, which is access, direct access to the basement for this home. It is in a very narrow side setback. Actually, the setback's almost up against the property line, as you can see here. This would be the side setback line, this centered line. And the stairs approximately 3.8 by 9.8, as far as the dimensions of the actual stair. What we're trying to do is, and I have some photos, get a better understanding. So the stair is actually going to sit inside between these two properties, between two buildings, and will be set, setback from the face of the home. And another view would be over here to the side. And this is coming down from left, left for key, the corner, and this would be the adjoining property. That's another property here. So this kind of, this kind of look with the stairs is kind of similar to what we're trying to do here. So we're trying to stay within, you know, uniform with what's happening already kind of in the area. Go back to application. So the idea was to give direct access, because they're legalizing right now currently the finished basement portion. And this would give direct access to the utilities, as well as the gas meter and mechanics to the home. And currently, you know, we're trying to do it for a couple reasons, for direct, for maintenance for the home, but also for life safety, but also we figured it's a low-profile addition that would create accessibility to the, to the basement. And we're trying to stay within the character of the neighborhood.
Mr. Rimmer, is this, like, is it required for there to be egress from the, from the basement? Does that, does this have any-
No, not, not as per these plans. They do have egress from the basement with a window and everything.
Hmm.
But it's, it's not required. It's a two-family house that's connected to the first floor, too.
And we do, we did get the neighbors on the left and the right. We do have support letters from them as well, because we do know that we're very close to their homes.
Do we have that, you know, package?
The letters?
Yeah, right here. Actually, I have them here, and this is-
I have not received them.
I could certainly share them with you.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, why don't you read that one to us?
Okay, so this is 78, this is 78 Virginia, which is this property right here. He's Atkins Noah and Sotell, which is their client. And he's basically discussing, we reviewed the plans and the addition improvements with him, and basically, they support the improvements. And then we also had the same kind of letter with the 15, 15 left for key, which is this house here, which is the one that we're closest to. That would, this house here.
Could you, at your earliest convenience, forward those letters to the-
Yes, yes, I can certainly do that. I actually sent them to Sarah this, this morning. It was just too late in the day to get it into the-
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this application? Anyone else? Any motions?
Yeah, would you like to do this?
Yeah, motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve the application and the variances as requested.
All in favor? The resolution passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final application tonight is for 231 Clinton Avenue, and do we have an applicant here on that?
Yes. Evening.
Okay, and this is somewhat different, because it doesn't involve a variance. So tell us who you are, and you're, you're appealing a determination by the building department that a building permit is required for a chicken coop on your property.
Correct.
Okay, so you can be heard on why you disagree with that ruling.
Thank you. My name's Dan Penessi, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, as you said, for 231 Clinton Avenue. The hearing is to have the zoning board review the building department's determination that a chicken coop is an accessory structure under the village zoning code and therefore require a permit. There's a few things I'd like to go over. New York case law on the matter is pretty clear that in the absence of objective codified criteria, the designation of a coop by the building department as the village's land use officer as an accessory structure is arbitrary and capricious. Furthermore, it's well-established that zoning ordinances must be strictly construed in favor of the property owner, and that's certainly the case here, where the limits of a coop under the code is undefined. The only finding can be that coops are not accessory structures under the village code, and, and therefore, no permit is required, and therefore, no violation exists. There's really two questions the zoning board needs to answer in this case, and that's whether the code as written defines a coop as an accessory structure requiring a permit. And then if so, at what point does a coop become an accessory structure under the zoning code and therefore require a permit? The relevant code sections are Section 153-1, which addresses chickens, chicken coops, and other animals and pets. And it states that these animals must be kept in a, quote, "run, yard, or other structure, which shall be maintained in a sanitary condition and free from offensive odors." This code very specifically anticipates that chickens, as one of those animals, will be kept in some- as one of those animals, will be kept in some form of enclosure or coop. And it only imposes two conditions, the structure be sanitary and then it must not create a nuisance in the form of noise or odor. Crucially, the code does not cross-reference any accessory structure definition, nor does it subject coops to a certain size, height, setback restriction, material, the way an accessory structure would so regulate other types of structures in the village. The other relevant sections are two oh four dash sixty-six, which addresses accessory structures and appurtenances specifically. Again, there's no reference to chicken coops, indicating this is a use issue, not a dimensional issue. Section one twenty-seven five of the code, which addresses permits, again, no reference to chicken coops. And this appeal is taken under section three hundred of the code in response to the ticket that was issued. And under a separate venue, there is a summons before the village court. So therefore, I'm going to repeat it. The code does not classify coops as an accessory structure or require permits. This is a use issue. These coops are used solely to house chickens. And if the village intended to regulate coops as accessory structures, the code would reflect that. Two thirty-one Clinton is in the OF two zoning district. The property is otherwise in complete strict compliance with all zoning code requirements, including setbacks. The process that we undertook, my family and I live there, we undertook. We looked at the code, reviewed these code sections and determined that no permit was required. We confirmed in person then at the building department and asked whether the chicken coop would require a permit. And we're told, no, no permits were required for coops. We then researched chicken coops on Google and we included those search results in our application. And you can see that they all are similar structures designed and they're all used exclusively to house chickens. We ordered the coop, very similar to the ones that were in the, in the search results. And we've included the specific coop that we purchased. We prepared the site, including steel mesh underground, present, prevent predators and pests, and located the coop in the side yard. Seven hens arrived in June. We got a ticket. To our knowledge, no personal inspection was ever performed of the coop. In fact, it's unclear whether at the time the ticket was issued, the building department assumed that the coop was going to remain in the front yard, where it was delivered temporarily before it was relocated to the side yard. But if the building department had no personal knowledge, how did it determine that a permit was even actually required for this coop? We then submitted a FOIL request. We included that request in our application. At the time of our filing of this appeal, it hadn't been received. But I do have copies of that FOIL result, if you'd like to see it. But I can tell you, there was no substantive findings. No permit applications, no decisions, no permits, no agendas, no minutes, absolutely nothing. And to me, this indicates there's no precedent in the village to treat a coop as an accessory structure or require a permit, especially since I have personal knowledge of other people who have or have had chickens in this village. And in the course of a thirty-minute inspection, we were able to locate at least a half a dozen. And I do have pictures, if you'd like, of the different chicken coops in the village. And they remain, they range from sheds to dog houses to chicken wire coops. They're all different shapes, sizes, materials, and designs. Some are located right up against the property lines. And this reinforces that coops are not accessory structures in the village under the zoning code. They've never been treated as accessory structures under the village code, and there's no precedent for it.
Well, could I, could I ask a few questions?
Sure.
So, so are you familiar with the definition of accessory building or structures in the village code at section three hundred dash fifteen?
Yes.
So that says, an accessory building is a building which is subordinate and accessory to a principal building on the same lot and which is used for purpose customarily incidental to the principal building. Is there anything about that definition that doesn't fit a chicken coop?
All I can tell you is that chicken coops have not required permits or been treated as accessory structures in the village. So if, if that is the case, if it's the zoning board's position that a chicken coop is an accessory structure under three hundred dot fifteen, at what point would the coop become an accessory structure?
Well, well, let me continue, the definition continues. It says, examples in a residential setting include private garages, tool houses, children's playhouse, or non-commercial greenhouses. So it would seem to me that by saying these are examples, that means this is not the entire universe of things that can be accessory structures. So it seems that your argument is based on the idea that it's, it's a choice between if it's a chicken coop, it can't be, it can't also be an accessory structure. But I don't understand the logic of that.
Well, it, it would seem to me that it's rather ambiguous, isn't it? If, if the building department takes a position that chicken coops do not require a permit, and it was even suggested that we could replace the coop we purchased with a chicken wire coop having the same dimensions. At what point would we leap from a chicken coop that is an accessory structure to a chicken coop that is?
And, and let me just say, you know, we, we're not here to police the way the process, you know. There's a lot of facts that aren't relevant to our decision. We're, we're just being called upon to interpret the code. And, you know, I think the question is, the fact that the use is permitted, which there's no question about, is a different question from must a building that's being used for that purpose comply with the requirements for an accessory structure? Let, let me ask you. Suppose someone built a, a chicken coop that's ten stories tall. Would there be nothing the building department could?
Well, no, I think that there's other, there's other relevant sections of the zoning code that would require, require a permit for a structure like that, or the building code.
Well, why would that be different?
Well, a ten-story structure would certainly require certain things like sprinklers and means of egress. And, you know, the hypothetical doesn't hold, right? If a ten-story structure is, you know, you're going to have to look at the site and, and there's other building code requirements for human occupancy that would have to be considered.
But, but I think, I think the problem is, by the way, I walked past and you can see the, the chicken coop from, from Clinton. And it looks like a very attractive building that looks very good where it is. So we're not, we're not being asked to decide whether a permit should be.
No doubt, the jurisdiction's limited here, right?
We're, we're, right, we're only being asked to decide whether you have to go through the process that applies to every other structure, every other thing that is defined as a accessory building or structure under the code. And you're, you're asking for an exception and, and.
I'm not asking for an exception at all.
Well, I think you are.
No, I'm asking, like, take for example, if, if we were, if you were to determine that this is an accessory structure, we elected not to go through the permitting process with the air for building permit or AHRB for this, this matter, right? That's the avenue it would go. What could we do? What could we replace it with? Would you agree that it's unclear in the zoning code what we could replace it with without requiring a permit?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe the intent in the code for, for a chicken coop was a wired structure on the ground to house a couple chickens for your personal use. I, I think that was the intent of the code, to, to have chickens. By this structure, as you said you walked by, it's, it's a lot bigger. It's accessory to the main building.
I can tell you, you can't infer, Dan, respectfully, you can't infer intention of the code without a, a.
With all due respect, I thought the chairman's analysis was extremely good. When we do a zoning variance or approve a permit or something, we have to make sh- I don't know that in three years, what you've created in your mind to be a chicken coop is it going to have a new homeowner who's going to decide to make it a, a different purpose. And I've already permitted it, you know, it.
I don't know that we're asking for a permit here, right? That's the point. We're not asking the zoning board to issue any permits.
Yeah, but we've allowed it to go forward.
You, you, you would be acknowledging that the zoning code is ambiguous as to what the definition of a chicken coop is and that this structure is in fact a chicken coop and not an accessory structure.
Well, the, the problem is, I don't, I don't think there's a zoning category for chicken coop.
No, there is. It's one fifty-three.
Well, a, a use, yeah, so, so for, for the use, not for, not for the structure.
Let me, let me also tell you.
The zoning code defines accessory buildings or structures. And examples would include a greenhouse. So conceptually, why does a greenhouse need a permit but a chicken coop doesn't? A greenhouse is also a permitted use. So, so.
I, I agree.
So what's the distinction?
The Board of Trustees elected to include greenhouses in the definition of accessory structure.
But, but not exclusively. It, it, these are examples, these are examples. They're not a, you know, finite list of things that can be accessory structures.
But would you agree if it was intended that chicken coops, which were specifically addressed in the zoning code, were intended to be accessory structures requirement of permit, it necessarily would have said, such as other similar jurisdictions? By the way, Hastings and other Westchester municipalities put rather specific limits on things like chickens. Minimum acreage, size, location.
Mr. Penessi, how does going through the process outlined by the building department compromise your ability to move forward with what you want to accomplish?
Look, I, I don't want to waste anybody's time, frankly. You're going to hear other comments on the public record perhaps tonight. And we are simply availing ourselves of the avenues available in New York State and at the village.
Right, I, just usually part of the zoning issue is we wanted to, if a adverse decision has a negative impact on the homeowner. I'm interested in knowing, if we were to render a decision which you might perceive as adverse, how that impacts your ability to accomplish your goal?
Well, I mean, frankly, we, we have a couple of options available to us if you were to render that type of decision. It could be an article seventy-eight on the decision. It could be that we replace the chicken coop. And quite frankly, if you render a decision adverse to us, I'm not really sure what we could replace the coop with in the village of Dubsberry.
Could you apply for a permit?
We could apply for a building permit and go to AHRB.
That you might pursue as being a, a direct way to get what you want to have accomplished?
Not necessarily. I think it's, you'll, what I'll find and probably what you'll hear is that it's a rather indirect way to do it.
Thank you.
So is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this application? Please step to the microphone and tell us your name and your address and.
Sure. Orlando Knaus, Rachel Colby, we live next door, two twenty-five Clinton Avenue. So off the bat, we're not anti-chicken, or anti-chicken. And we've tried to resolve this in a neighborly construction, constructed way. And I've asked Mr. Penessi to put the coop somewhere else because it's right. Not only is it the Taj Mahal of chicken coops, but it's right adjacent to our property. We smell it, we hear it, we hear it. Our kids are affected by it. It's a topic every day.
We see it in every window in our house. It's like uniquely intrusive where it's been placed.
So, so that's a human element. And it's just, it's just also like, there's a, the element you were just talking about. It's a blatant bypass of the permitting process. It's wrong. Should have gone through the process. That's the right thing to do. That's what we do here in this nice town.
We could have commented then, you know, it would have gone through AHRB, you know.
So it's ten, the Taj Mahal element, it's ten feet above, it's on a burn, right overlooking our patio. It's, you know.
The glossy roof that we can see, you know, it should have gone through AHRB.
It's just wrong. It's just wrong.
Let me, I, I appreciate everything you're saying. There, there's no application before us.
Right, right.
So the question for tonight is, does he have to begin that process?
Yeah, they have to get a permit.
But there was a stipulation in his thing on number two. First of all, it is street frontage. You saw it on Clinton Avenue. It's not on the side. It's street frontage, number one. And it's, and there isn't an out that there's no noise and odor. There's noise and odor. So, you know, he just needs to be a good neighbor and just go through the processes. That's what we do. It's civilized.
And if we get, if, you know, you rule against us, fine, but it should be done in a proper way.
And we've tried everything.
It's an, absolutely a structure. It's just a structure, I don't know what to say.
We ask you to do the right thing.
Thank you, thanks.
But if you have, I'm sorry, we ran away. But if you have questions?
No, but, any questions? No, thank you. Is there anyone else online who wants to be heard? Do we want to, oh, I have to recuse myself. Oh, okay, right. Mr. Capasso, for personal reasons, is accusing himself. Means Mr. Sacks, because we otherwise won't have a quorum, is going to, going to cast a vote.
Should I make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Motion to deny the applicant's appeal of the building department's interpretation of the village code pertaining to accessory structures.
Is there a second?
A second.
All, all in favor? Aye. So, you know, let me, let me just say, thinking about this, this application, it took me back to a college logic course I took quite a lot of years ago. And it's one of those things, if, if there were a Venn diagram of accessory structures with, you know, a big circle that contains all accessory structures, within that, there would be little circles, some of which would be tool sheds, some would be greenhouses, there could be lots of things. But, but it's a, it's a fallacy to say something can't be two things. So if it's a chicken coop, it can't also be a structure. You know, it meets all the definitions of an accessory structure and that's why.
I'm not so sure that the code reflects the definition.
At any rate, that's.
It does the elegant code and it's not, it's a poor to, right? There's an ambiguity. Those are.
No, we, I, I don't think we see the ambiguity. I think, I think. Well, but, but I think, I think, I think the issue is what the code defines without any ambiguity is an accessory structure. The, the, that is a large universe of things that have certain things in common and certain things that are different. But because one particular accessory structure is also a chicken coop, that doesn't mean it stops being an accessory structure. And the, you know, there's a logical fallacy to saying things have to be either or. They don't always have to be either or.
The question though is, is at what point would it? It's not, it's not the other way around.
Well.
That's a difference of opinion.
And, and anyway, I, we, we, we've issued our opinion and.
Well, the editorial, the editorial is always fun.
At any rate.
Could you guys stay for a minute before, after?
Okay, I think we're adjourned. Thank you.
Chairman, why was Stuart not allowed to vote throughout the whole meeting?